That's an ocean issue.
Yeah.
We have a lot of big enough to get up there.
My feeling on the-
And it's a good use of someone's time to get down there and actually replace them with a stick and with a suction cup and having, I mean, it just really doesn't make any sense. And I don't want to beat this dead horse, but I guess either yes on the, can we at least agree that we, do we want the same kind of sign that's there right now on that wall? Can we at least come to that consensus? Do we want that or not?
So my feeling is, right now, I think we have a lot of great technological options for people who get their media that way, you know, the emails, the mail blasts, the other things. I think what the sign has right now is more for the person who's walking by or isn't on the internet, isn't, so I think the dynamic that we could address by fixing the old sign is actually probably more of the outreach that we're missing. I think we have a really full encompassing system to alert these people electronically. I don't know if you guys feel that way, but I know I've got six new emails today from the Twitter feed of the things that are going on, so there's obviously a lot of ways to get that out there.
I see direction.
So do you need a motion or do you-
I don't, this is not an, I just need-
Not a motion, he just needs direction, he needs a consensus.
So let me summarize what I'm hearing.
So my preference would be-
I was trying to-
We fix the current sign and move on. I don't have, I don't have the nerve to go to the town and ask the voters for forty-five thousand dollars for a sign. That to me is just, that's just foolishness.
Do you want her to go? Do you want someone to, or Matt, to look into getting, can you get new letters for that thing? Or is it not even, they're not even available?
We haven't even, I mean, I've also been looking into the electronic option, so we haven't even looked at that, but-
So we have set-
I'd say get new letters.
We have, we have set forty thousand dollars aside from our fund balance from last year. That money, if not used, goes back to the, back to the town, well, set the tax rate. What I would ask is that you allow me to use a portion of that money, a very small portion, five grand or less, to look to upgrade the sign as it currently is, whether it's replacing it in kind or taking the one that's there and making it so that we can access that, add new letters, add new layers, whatever needs to be done, repaint it, reissue it, whatever it is. So that, so you would be returning somewhere of thirty-five thousand dollars or more back to the community out of that fund now.
I would agree to that.
Do you need a motion for that?
If you would like to-
No, no, we just need a consensus.
Yes, you know, I think, I think that's the right ballpark.
If we're talking-
Yeah, if you're gonna ask me to spend the money, I'd ask you, yeah.
Okay. Make the motion then.
So I motion that we allow Russ to use up to five thousand dollars of the money that was set aside for this project to repair or, and/or replace in a similar fashion the existing sign.
Okay, motion made by April. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. There you go.
Thank you. We have a direction. We have a direction. All right. Next, we just start from one topic to the next. Let's see, one, two, three, going that way, one, two, three, going that way. I spoke last meeting regarding the due diligence of this board to come up with a plan on what it would like to do with Sonopis Central Elementary School. Again, it may not be anything that we're talking about doing over the next year, five years, even ten years, but I think we need to make a decision and prepare what it is we're going to do and how we're going to do moving forward. Part of that decision was to do a site study on the existing building that's there. Dan Bisson did a site study for you under a different corporation back in two thousand and six. That study is ten years old. He now has been brought up by Harriman. Harriman is one of the larger builders for municipalities, specifically schools, both in Maine and New Hampshire, and I believe in Massachusetts as well. And they have put a proposal in to come and do that study for us. You see, it's proposed for you. The price tag of that is forty thousand dollars to do that study. What that then will give you is an opportunity to say what is meeting state code, what is not meeting state code, classroom size, playground size, square footage, what is needed to run the programs that you have based upon your current population, what you are using that is in compliance and out of compliance. We know we have some compliance issues in that building, and we know that we often get told, just be safe and do the things you need to do, and we understand, and the Yankee mentality of making things work, and we do a nice job of that. And again, credit to Matt and his crew and to Jody and her innovative thinking. But this board should make a decision on what to do, and again, that first step really is to have a site assessment done, and then from there, develop a plan of action, whether that's renovate, leave it alone, rip it down, start over, whatever it may be.
Can you talk a little bit about what we found in the last site assessment ten years ago? Did we take the recreations or are we gonna hear the same old thing?
Yep. So the last site study actually moved forward to a proposal. That proposal went in front of, and Sean, correct me if I'm wrong in the history, but went in front of the Warren, went into Warren Col, in front of the voters, was defeated. And so there was an additional entrance way, there were additional, I think there were four, maybe five classrooms, and there were several versions that were looked at along the way, and I think there was one that was finalized. I don't, I have all the information, I'm sorry, I don't have the price tag on that right now, but it was defeated at the point. And I think that's where it died at that point, because I believe it was, there were two or three attempts at it?
I-
Three?
It's a, I don't know how to begin on that one. I mean, it's just a, it's a tough nut. I mean, it's, we're, unfortunately, unfortunately, Sonopis, the building is good, there's nothing wrong with the building. We've been, we've gone to the taxpayers, the taxpayers have given us enough money to get it to where it's mechanically sound. The problem we have is the rooms are out of compliance. The needs of the children, the way we teach is different nowadays. It's just every, all of the interior stuff that you would do in that building is outdated by far. And, and even though, when I first got on the board, we had a hundred more students, you know, from K on up. Now we have less, and we still have the problems where there are a certain amount of kids that are in the hall, that are being either schooled or taught or something which they shouldn't be. So it seems like we make, we get a Band-Aid, then we get a tourniquet, then we take it all off, and we're fixed, and all, I mean, it just, it's just a back and forth, back and forth. Dan worked for Team Design, they got bought out by Harrison, Harriman, and nothing's changed. We can look at our old, we can look at, the old study's pretty much the same. He's gonna basically rewrite it, bring it up to today's standards. We ended up with five designs, if I remember right, two of them we basically were leaning Unfortunately, well, fortunately and unfortunately, if we want state funding, then we have to build another access.
Is there state funding available?
Well, there won't be for quite some time. It's kinda like the bridge stuff, whereas, like the bridge stuff, if you wanted to put a bridge together right now, you may have the funds for that bridge in two thousand twenty. So you'd have to play that game of either doing it, and then hopefully the funds are there when you get there, and if they're not there, then there you are. So the problem we run into is butting heads with the town to try to figure out what major project makes the most sense. So we backed off when we were doing it, and the Safety Service Building went in. Then we backed off it, and then the library went in, which is, nothing wrong with that, it's just that's, that's what happened. So since the Safety Service Building's gone in, we gave X amount of money to engineer a road that would come off the hill down behind the Safety Service Building.
Thank you.
Now they don't want us to do that because the Safety Service Building is where it is. So now they want us to re-engineer the road so it comes out in front of Route eleven, and it's like, well, now that added another two, five hundred and sixty thou, or five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars onto the, the new road. So my suggestion was to, let's see if the town will vote to put a road in. And if the town votes to put a road in, then they really want to upgrade the school. Because you can, all day long, you can ask the town if they want a new school, and I don't think they want a new school. Out of that, I think out of that survey, we figured out they don't want a new school, which is fine, because I don't think we need a new school, and you think we need to renovate the one we have, because there's nothing wrong with the structure. So part of, three of those designs were to add a system onto that. Take off the left-hand side of the building where the newest addition was put on, because it was kinda designed for a southern atmosphere, you know what I mean? There's no insulation, and it's very poor. Tear that off and actually utilize that left-hand side of the building as the front of the building again, because that was originally the front of the building when it was built. The name and everything's still above that side of it, it says Sonopis. But anyways, and then he was going to add on to the right-hand side, bring material in, add on to the right-hand side, and it would create some rooms around where the old, where the library is, or the old gym, and start doing some form of envelope, which really makes the most sense. It was the most cost-effective, and we were, it was allowing us to actually run the school and not have to get temporaries in there. We were actually able to run X amount of the, because of the confines of the main structure, we were, he was going to be able to build those outer ones, once they were built, move the kids into that section, it would be tight, and then fix the interior up, and then it would be up to code. So we've gotta go to the taxpayers to see which way they wanna do it. The only problem is, we either, we know, one of the biggest problems is, we know we have a problem with the entrance of the building. So we either have, we either need to comply with what the state wants, or to comply just to be safe, because one way in, one way, you know, same way out is, doesn't make sense. If we fund it all ourself, then it looks like that's what's gonna happen, because I don't see the state, I don't see the state's pockets, they're just not there.
Sean, can I just speak to, you know, you spoke about structurally the building is sound and is, but inside space issues, there are other things that continue to come up. And great job, as Matt's guys do, you know, the shapes are wrong most of the time because there's so much heat loss of many of the windows. Plaster behind radiators in classrooms, it's probably, you can't repair pieces behind the radiator. Hang whatever that'll cost, or don't the radiators, I mean, we keep doing these very expensive fixes without an overall plan.
Right. The major, we've done the electric over, we've done the, the windows, but you're right, we may have not have kept up with the heating system like we should have. The heating system was pulled, the steam was pulled away, and it's water, hot water, forced hot water now, which is good. The only thing that we really need to do that's major is really replummet. The boilers are good, the boilers, we had a meltdown, we got two new boilers, and we have the two main arteries to the, to the valves done. But from there to the rest of all the rooms, right about now, should be done, because they're loaded. The, the last time ARC was in there, which was quite a while ago, and they got everything actually running right, and the air conditioning running right, and the heat actually running right, so they didn't have to keep the windows open, and not the air conditioning, but just the heat running. They basically made it, they made a macronation that you change, you change the pipes. The pipes have to be changed, because the efficiency of the registers are, you can't get anything out of them unless you change the piping. And that's where we stand, and we left it alone.
Would it make sense to look at a subcommittee, just to look at this one building?
I think it-
Not the building committee, not the, not the capital improvements committee, just a group of people, just to go back, revisit what the proposal was ten years ago, so we don't have to pay forty thousand dollars to recreate it. Let's go back, evaluate that, see where we are, see the number of students, walk through the building, get a feel for whether we want to put this in front of the voters or not.
Are you suggesting committee made up of the members here, or we go outside of?
I would, I would say one or two from here, not a quorum, because it's easy to meet, and maybe, maybe it's principal, sorry.
And somebody for maintenance to help point out the issues. Sorry.
I mean, I would do it, just like you said, I would do it internally here until we decide to go out, because I think we definitely need the community, I think we need everybody, but the thing is, to look at the, what we have for information first, we need to look into it, and then have another meeting, and then talk to everybody out here.
So that group can come back to the board and report.
Exactly.
And at this point on, I have a clear understanding of what we have already in hand versus-
And it may make sense just to have Dan to come to that committee, just to talk about it, because I've, you have all the old copies of-
I have it all.
You have it all? I mean, I've got an extra set of all that stuff, as far as what they were gonna look like, what the road was gonna look like, all that stuff.
So would-
So we really don't wanna reinvent the wheel.
Would someone make a motion to establish a SES facility study committee, and including in that motion, permission to bring Dan Bisson in to deal with that committee as needed? Would people be okay with-
Do you want a dollar amount on that?
Yeah, I mean, you, more than welcome to, whatever that-
There's a menu on the back, so we can buy, is that a fact?
I would say, I would say, I would bring him in just for consultation, I mean, I'm sure he's gonna do that.
Yeah, is he allied with him?
I don't think he's gonna, I don't think he's gonna charge him up here and do a consultation, because he did a lot for us in his old company, but I could be wrong, I mean, he's, and we paid him for all the plans, all the drawings, all that stuff, so I would imagine he would come up and just-
So you even, even believe that if, if there's a substantial expense that you come back and we discuss it as a, as a board?
And again, you have forty thousand dollars that you've set aside from the fund balance that if not used, goes back to the taxpayers.
Yep.
Now, I think the, the road is a separate issue. I think no matter what we end up doing, we still need to petition for that road to go in again, whether it be we keep the school as is, or we try and build a new school closer to the high school, either way, that road would still be valuable, correct?
Well, I think you're gonna have, if we get our own financing, I could be wrong, but it'd be interesting to find out if they would be, they may want a second entrance too. Because technically, because of emergencies.
Right.
And with, I can tell you, well, with the homeland security and all the stuff that's going on nowadays, one person sideways on the road up there, and you can't get up there. You can't even get any piece of equipment up there. So I really don't think it's, I don't think it's right, I don't think it's healthy for us to even think about moving forward with any kind of renovation up there without thinking about some form of a different road, or another road, to make it so that we're not saddled with a major, major problem.
I agree, and I think that's an easier expense for people to, to start with, at least to say this is what we need than-
Well, that at least allows you, if they wanna put a road in there, then at least you know that that, they definitely wanna stay there on that hill and rebuild what you got there.
But what I'm saying is, even if we decided not to stay there, if we want to build something closer to the high school, we could just extend that road, because we own the property between the two, correct? Is that the case? Could you utilize that?
You're missing a chunk, you'd have to go through Bailey's property to get there. And we already looked at that, we did look at that. That other option was to have a, the other option was to have a new building right behind the SAU. So that was the other option of Team Design's portfolio, whatever they brought, you know, what they brought forward, the five different options, five or six different options that they brought forward.
Something to look at, just see what they have.
Good motion, Brian. I was gonna say, do you need a motion?
If you would like to formalize a facility study committee?
I would like to make a motion that we formalize a facility study committee to look at the elementary school in particular, to review the previous information that we have available, and come back to the board and report.
And if-
Develop a proposal.
And if he needs, do you wanna put a dollar amount, so he can, if Dan says, well, I can come up for X amount, or you wanna-
I'll keep you, I'll keep you pretty honest on that.
Okay.
Really looking up.
I'll second.
Okay.
With a goal of coming back by-
If I could interject on the timeline, we are starting the strategic planning this year, and certainly, major capital renovations would be suitable for the strategic plan, and the information that this person, the Harriman Group, would bring forth would be valuable in terms of looking at this on a long-term, with a long-term strategy, which is important. You know, there are so many things to consider when we're looking at major capital renovations, and primarily, in my mind, is the enrollment projection. And, and if we have some solid planning in place to determine what our long-term goals are for the school district, and also for cap, major capital improvements, we will be better poised to make firm and solid decisions. So I would, I would want this committee to be formed and, and have its first go-round or meeting to get that information prior to the strategic planning process.
That might be a little bit off.
Well, and we're, we're gonna talk about strategic plan, but, you know, our first meeting's August thirtieth, and that's with the leadership team, but the conclusion of the strategic plan really is June of seventeen.
So we would have time.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, if we could get to maybe January to, to meet, and I'm thinking maybe two or three times with this new committee, with Jody, myself, Matt, and as Brian recommended, or you decide, two board members, to research all this, to kinda bring it all in, understand it, come back and say, okay, here's what we found. I would hope that we could do that before January.
Yeah, and December would be a nice goal.
December would be a good goal.
Does that work? Does that work? Yeah, okay.
I'll second your motion, Brian.
You've already did.
We've already, I'll even vote for it.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I have April. Did you say anybody?
Yeah.
But then he added on to it, so I don't know.
Would you like to put two people on that committee forum?
We can do that. Who would like to be on that committee?
I'm happy.
Okay.
So I'm happy to do that, or if you wanna take somebody else and I'll do the strategic plan.
It's-
You as in history, I don't know what your timeline looks like, but you as in history, would you be willing to-
How can I help?
Heather and Paul?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
See for you, thanks.
You'll be getting an email from me very shortly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Harriman Group, Dan Bisson, good guy, nice guy actually, he really is. Strategic planning?
August thirtieth, we're meeting with the leadership group, the administration, myself, to review, again, review the process. The administration is in the process of inviting folks from the community to both sit on our focus groups and our strategic planning group as, as a whole. The NIESC is in the process of developing, they're going out and doing that, study, Heather you just spoke of, looking at our long-range enrollment, talking with our planning committee and Roger and the town, and doing all sort of the back work on us. They'll bring a proposal, some of that information to us on the thirtieth, for us to kinda look at, and then again, we're studying to invite folks to participate in the strategic planning process. We're hoping to start that, I think we focus somewhere about October, September, late September, early October, to start having our first initial large strategic planning group, and again, that's somewhere between ten and twenty, depending on how folks who accept and who comes to that and who gets invited, and then our focal groups, which will be much larger base, you know, have a community, one a parent, one a teacher, one student, and those would be a lot, obviously, bigger and, and more inclusive. So that's just an update.
Now, at what, at what point are you selecting members?
Well, after we meet on the thirtieth, I think we'll have a better understanding. If you as a board would like to have a conversation this time about who you would like to put on that committee, you can tell me. I don't have to tell you.
Well, I'd just like to tell you, as I mentioned before, I had the opportunity to work on the strategic planning committee, committee a few years ago for a beginning for Sullivan County, which is just a local nonprofit. I think it was a good experience, so I know what I'm getting into as far as time commitments, and I really think it's, I'd like to be a part of the team to, to help us in this direction moving forward.
Okay. Anybody else like to be on the strategic?
Now, this is the master committee that we're-
So this would be your, your committee, right? You, you as a board, again, have the final approval, you would be two members of the board who sits with administration, some teachers, and some community, parent community members. That would be your, your large strategic planning committee.
And what are you anticipating the time commitment to be on the upfront?
They talked about somewhere between probably six to ten meetings throughout the year, could be as, as less than six to eight, and really depends on where our focal groups, focus groups take us, and what those things come out, and what those things are, that are strengths or areas that we need to address, and how we bring that all together, and how quickly we're willing to move forward, and how long that process takes. So it's, as I said, the, the final product is June, so it's not worth starting in September and hopefully done by January. It's, if we get done in April, May, great, but we've strung up, we put our deadline as of June.
We don't wanna push it and not get it done in the first time.
And you're looking for two board members at this point?
Yep.
Okay. I would, I would sit on that committee.
Do you wanna be, do you still wanna do the elementary school?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanna make sure it's too much.
No more?
You've got it.
I'm good.
You can only take two anyways.
I see, I'm going the wrong way there.
You already got something.
So you focus that?
Only to take two on it?
Only taking two.
Yeah. Okay, perfect.
I'm good. Thank you.
No? Yep. Committee conversations, follow-up?
Again, committee conversations will, this stems off of our risk behavior survey, adverse use behavior survey, working with Jackie Watkins, Middle School Guidance Council, High School Guidance Council here. We are looking to bring some folks in, wanting to talk to our students regarding drug and alcohol use, based upon not only our results, but just what we know nationally, and what we know statewide about drug and alcohol use in our teens, in our community, and pushing that through life of an athlete as well, through the high school, but then trying to build that to a community conversation, because again, this isn't just a school issue, this is a community issue, of trying to hopefully find a group that can come and speak a little louder as a community, and then let community take action. As I said before, this will not be the school saying, hey, we're gonna fix this, because we can't fix this. Collective, we can fix this. And that's what we're trying to do, is trying to build some momentum in that area where the school can help facilitate to start to get those things going, and then let those conversations grow, and let industry and community members take over and say, here's what we're willing to do based upon our community, our youth, and what we value, what we want for our children. So that's, we're just trying to get the ball moving. So that's still in process, and again, working with Jackie Watkins in the, at the middle high school.
I know you're doing a good job. I know you're doing a good job.
So I think I spoke to you regarding our drill earlier tonight, met with Chief Cahill again in middle, middle summer sometime, homeland security came in, we've set a date, August twenty-seventh, nine PM here at Sonopis Middle High School. This is a letter that we emailed out to the all high school students, looking for folks to volunteer. We were looking for students and teachers to participate in this, so that it has a reality to it, excuse me, a realization to it. This is really a drill for the police department to go through with the protocols and procedures, but at the same time, obviously, it allows us to look at our own protocols and procedures when it comes to emergency management. It is an active shooter drill. We asked for high school students, we're looking for probably in between thirty, forty-five kids, we wanna come on that Saturday, show up about eight PM. There's a permission slip there that we're asking folks to have sign, making sure, AM, I'm sorry, it's eight PM.
That could be a challenge.
That'd be a bigger challenge. AM's a challenge, right. AM, permission slip there for folks to sign, so parents understand, because there will be, police going through the building, this would be a very live situation, where their weapons will be drawn, they will be using, what do you call them, I'm calling them fake rounds or soft rounds, within, within the weapons themselves, the weapons will be discharged potentially in the school. It's really, have our kids here, have our teachers here, and see what happens. You know, what do you do when you see X happen? And what are our protocols, and how do our teachers react, and how do our students react, and then when the police do come in our building, how do we react to that? And, you know, we've talked about the fact we go into a lockdown, and our kids and teachers are very well-trained, you don't answer the door in a lockdown, you don't go in the other door, you don't do anything, and that was really interesting going through that process, because the police are like, well, what is gonna go to your room and knock on the door and tell the kid it's time to leave? And we're like, you can knock on the door all day long, they're not getting out of the room, they're not answering the door. And so it's working through some of those issues that potentially could come up in a potentially dangerous situation. So just making you aware of it.
Just one quick question on that.
The doors are gonna be left on the hinges and-
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, nothing to comment on. We have to disable the fire alarm system. Folks are going to be able to come if they want to come and observe. People, there'll be an observation area. You'll see of state police and Homeland Security here, and they'll be, again, evaluating police, police protocols. Our job is just to do it as we do, and then to follow the instructions of the police once we follow our process.
So, I have two questions. One, do you anticipate getting any trouble getting 30 to 45 kids to sign up?
Right now, yes. We haven't had any response, and we sent it out over a week ago.
And maybe we consider some sort of incentive, you know, not bringing pizza, but something to incentivize the kids to do so. Point out that it probably counts as a community service hour for them, or something like that. And then my other question, concern is, you'll have the guidance counselors on hand to kind of walk through it afterwards. In my experience, people who have gone through active shooter drills in the workforce, even though we're adults and we're prepared for this, find that it's a tough reality that this is the world we live in. So, I just want to make sure there's support for the kids. Unfortunately, at the high school level, they need to learn this, but just making sure that we're sort of regrouping at the end and making sure they, they're comfortable.
Yeah, we've talked about, not only-
We don't lobby against it.
We haven't discussed it yet, but we talked about before having a pre-meeting with the police and the administration, and then obviously, the administration will be here as well, and there's kind of a post-meeting as well to go through that. And we can make sure if any kids have issues, and that's why it's clearly stated in the letter, this is also an emotional, not only a physical, but an emotional experience as well.
So, do you all end up with 30 to 40, does it still go on, or?
Yeah, I don't see it canceling because of it. I think we would ask for community people to come forward. If we had teachers, we had talked about potentially our sport teams that might be in and out of town, we're not sure.
How do you send the letters?
Alert, alert now, right?
Do you have any?
What I was going to say, based on the 30 to 40, I think an important piece of this hill is mostly good. And so, we really could, let's say we had eight students, you know, we could get much of the same thing, just by having two students in four different rooms in this stadium, you know, kind of look the reaction of that class. It would be nearly as accurate of the intended public. But it's really a loose draw for us. There's things we'll take away from it. There's eight students, we'll still be able to gather some information.
Do they have to be high school, or can they be older middle school?
They could be.
And have you considered some sort of incentive for gathering after to try and, I mean, 8:00 in the morning, maybe offer coffee? I'm not sure.
We didn't put any cats out there, but I'm sure we can.
Well, first, I would just invite and see what it sees.
Yeah, to see if we can comply.
Anybody else have any questions about that? I guess some would be the AP manifest and payroll manifest.
I move to approve AP manifest 2016-25, 26, 27, 28, 29, as well as 2017-01, and payroll manifest 2016-25 through 2016-27.2, also 2017-01 and -2.
Motion's been made for the payroll manifest and the AP manifest. They have a second. Second by Paul. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Getting to the public forum portion, anybody in the public like to bring something forward? Anything that we talked about on the agenda that you'd like to talk about? Okay, hearing none?
You have it here.
Where?
Anna Minor, North Road, Sunapee. I have a question about the exchange program. It's more out of curiosity. Is the tuition something that we set based on the tuition that we use locally? Or is it a tuition that we can adjust for international students? Or is it something that's recommended by affiliate zone? I'm just curious.
No, great question. So, originally, they asked for a cost per pupil. And when I gave him the cost per pupil, he said that might be an issue, that price, because that cost per pupil, based upon state calculations, is about $20,000. And I said, that's our cost per pupil, but here's our tuition cost. And he said, your tuition cost is much more in line with normal tuition costs for other districts, from other schools in the state.
Jody Manson, Yanni Love Road. I'm going to try to say this very respectfully, because I want it to come out respectfully, but I have to tell you, it hit a little bit of a soft spot when you're talking about bringing international students in. When I am a parent who took a student out and was never questioned as to why, there was no effort put into keeping the students that are leaving. So, it's a little bit of a soft spot that we're putting this kind of effort into bringing students in, which I think is a great idea. The whole international thing is a great idea. But I'm one of, there were three families here tonight that have removed students, and the removal process was poor, at best. So, my suggestion is putting a lot more effort into keeping your students here, and then as an addition, still trying to get your international students in. But I think you've lost your way in keeping your students here. My daughter's class, which would have been the 216, 2016 class, was a 30% dropout that they left. I don't know if you want to call it dropout, that's probably not the right term. But that's a big number in her class, had she stayed here, wasn't, didn't end up being a graduate in class. But, so why aren't we putting more effort into that? I know when my daughter left, there was no question as to why. And that's a huge problem. If people are leaving and are not asking why, there's got, got to be a fix there. And then, yes, bring the additional students in. I mean, I have no problem with that. But it is a sore spot when students are leaving and they're just let go. But yet, we're talking about bringing other students in, and the revenue can bring us, and blah, blah, blah. So, again, I mean that respectfully. I think you need to look at the other end of the spectrum a little bit better.
Can I just, so, Jody, in my mind, I think that's a big part of the strategic plan, making sure that we handle that. I know we certainly dealt with that when I worked with it before, but that's one of the many areas that do get addressed, is each individual coming in, coming out, how many do we want, which mixes. I think that part will be addressed in the upcoming strategic plan.
Maybe you want to move the staffs through.
No, I agree. It might work. We just actually went back.
If I can just clarify, just a point of reflection, Jody, absolutely not to be disrespectful, but I think kids come and go from schools all the time. I think we've had this conversation many times. There's individual reasons why kids come and go. I think our counselors here, our administration here, our teachers here do a great job of meeting the needs for every individual. We can always improve upon that. Every school can.
I'm Bill Ostermeyer in town, and I'm also a grandparent of a student that no longer goes, two students that no longer go to Sunapee. I've been here for over 40 years. So, I really don't think the whole situation was handled appropriately as far as finding out what the other side of the story was. So, now, my grandchildren are not in this school in Lumber, and I think it was totally mishandled, and I think it's been echoed by Jody, and it was also echoed by some of the administration. So, I really have a problem with looking for other students to come into school when my kids aren't even in school.
And again, I would just echo that individuals make decisions all the time in all schools across our country, whether it's come and go.